Good evening, folks, and welcome to our regular meeting of council for Monday, February 27th. Just marginally past 7:00 PM. Thanks for your patience. Looking for approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? opposed? Motion carried? Public participation time. Any members of our public? Come on forward.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Colleen Brownlee, 1323640, Propeller Place. I come to you this evening just to bring to your attention, and it may already have been brought to your attention, that I do have a concern, as do a number of residents, about continued blasting at Elevation Point. It came to my attention today, actually, when I came home to find a survey stake on the common property, although it is within the, on the property line of the development that's taking place. And I was in touch with your planning technician, Mr. Carlson, who's been very helpful. But it was a little bit shocking to see this immediately after looking at the website from Envision Realty and whatever, when they have outlined a plan on their website for two, possibly three condominium projects of six feet, excuse me, of six stories, et cetera. And of course, those would all have to be rezoned, et cetera, et cetera. So we prepared ourselves, or I prepared myself, to say, yeah, okay, what's happening? I like the area. I lived in Royal Bay, sold my house, and moved to a townhouse. But my concern is the communication, and I know it's not the responsibility of council. I have been a councillor in a neighbour jurisdiction, so I do know what your responsibilities are. However, I thought it was incumbent upon myself to come and express my feelings. I think that development goes on, developers go on, and I know that the Royal Bay people certainly did communicate with us when they were developing Royal Bay, and that certainly was much appreciated by everybody. But I think what's happening now, we don't seem to know from one day to the next. I'm not sure who's totally responsible to be communicating that with either the property management team or the individual residents who are directly concerned. My concern is that if they are going to be, and they are going to be blasting, because I understand that there are still three lots that would require some blasting of the major rock outcropping. This is 20 feet from my door and some other neighbours. However, I'm speaking for myself. That, to me, is a concern, because blasting, no matter how careful you are, does have some repercussions, no pun intended. I hope that when this does take place, in this next go-around, that there is sufficient notice given to all residences, residents in the area, that certainly the blasting is done with extreme care and due attention as to what may or may not occur. Certainly, I don't believe anybody wants to see what occurred on Ponside Terrace, and I'm not sure that has yet to be resolved. But we certainly do need sufficient notice, and plans need to be put in place. I don't want to come home again and find another survey stake, or come home and to find that a blast has occurred. And yes, I've gotten a memo that says they're going to be blasting between such and such hours to find that, A, there's damage to my dwelling and/or that my animal has passed out from sheer fright. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to come and bring this to your attention tonight. As a concerned resident, as a supporter of Callwood, I'm proud to live here. And when I did sell my place in Royal Bay, I wanted to stay in the Royal Bay in the area. And I would hope that council will take this under consideration. I know it's not up to you to make any decisions, but I do know that there are some variances that are coming forward. And all I can say is that I hope that we all work as good neighbours. And sometimes we have to give, and sometimes we have to take. But if we're communicating directly and accurately and working in good faith, then I think everybody will go along with what has to be done. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Colleen. Any other members of our public? Equal opportunity, both sides of the room can talk. You're still hobbling around, John. Any further comments from public? Seeing none, then we shall move on. Thank you. Mayor's message, I do have notification, council, I hope I see you on Monday, March 13th. It is literacy week, and I will be reading to one of the classes over at Wishart School, I believe. But all schools are open, and it would be nice to have representation amongst our elementary schools as we can on that date. So I know the notice has been circulated. Come on out and read to the kids. Anything else with members of council going on? Nope. And we want to get to the fun stuff on... Do you?
Sorry, just jumped into my mind. On March 8th, the University of Victoria is holding a First Nations event that the public is welcome to attend with a number of really good speakers, including David Suzuki. So I'm sure that members of the Callwood community would be interested in attending.
All right, thank you. Moving on into minutes and adoption of our council minutes of February 14th. All those in favor? opposed? Motion carried? I've been asked by the Chair of Protective Services to refer the minutes of January 18th back to that committee.
I would move that we refer the Protective Services back for extra consideration. There's just a couple of words missing. It doesn't quite make sense yet.
All those in favor? opposed? Motion carried? Receipt, then, please, for Planning and Land Use of January 17th, Official Community Plan Steering Committee, October 20th, and Special Committee of the Whole, February 1st. All those in favor? opposed? Motion carried? We do have a presentation for us this evening. Dialogue is here to give us an update on what we've been working on. So, Ms. Sandra, are you introducing? Are we got the team there ready to go?
So we have Jennifer Fixx and Molly Steves from Dialogue Design here to speak to us about the engagement for the OCP process up till now, if you guys want to take the stage. Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you for having us today. It's a pleasure to be here. Yes, so when we started this process, you might recall, a few months ago, there are two kind of big things that were put on our radar screen. One, that this OCP really represents a transformative opportunity for Callwood in that through land use and design and urban form, we can really start to bring the community's vision to life. There's an understanding of wanting to connect our land use policies with our community vision. So that was one thing. The other thing was that there was this recognition that Callwood, in many ways, is at a watershed moment. You have, you have things happening in Callwood Corners. Is that kind of a bifurcation point? You have a lot of activity happening at the waterfront. Royal Bay, of course, obviously poised for success. And so this OCP has the opportunity to really start to ask the question, who is Callwood? Who will Callwood be into the future? So that was really the starting point for our engagement with the community. And so what we're going to do today is walk through some of the key themes, some of the key highlights of what we've heard in the last few months. There are details in the report, so we're just going to walk through the highlights for you. So first, just to put it into context, the overall process, we're now just starting Phase Two. So what we're going to talk to you today about is the outcomes from Phase One. So this is really around understanding the community's priorities and big ideas for the future. What we heard will use to craft a draft vision, a draft set of goals, and strategic directions that will really lay the foundation for the new OCP. And then we'll be bringing that back to the community for input. So why did we engage in the first place? So Ian Howitt, when we started, he told us that he wanted us to be able to reach into the kitchens of every resident of Callwood. And I don't think we've been successful yet, although we're not quite done, the process. But we were wanting to raise interest and spark curiosity about this process. And kudos goes to Sandra and her team for really getting the word out. And you'll see some numbers soon, but really successfully reaching out to a large number of residents. The other thing we wanted to do through engagement was build capacity. Recognizing that engagement is more than communication, it's more than information out, it's information in. So we're wanting to have this mutual learning and mutual exchange happening. So we're going to see more of that happening in Stage Two, where we're going to be able to help connect the dots for people between what they say they want and how that might be achieved. But there's this building capacity and raising the literacy around some of these issues that we'll be doing in the next stage. Obtaining input. At the end of the day, this OCP needs to reflect the aspirations of the community. So what we're going to do, or what we're doing, is ensuring that we take everything we heard and meaningfully use it in the plan development process. And that really lends itself to the fourth imperative around why we're engaging, and that's creating a sense of ownership. So that once this OCP is brought forward to you for adoption, you can feel confident that the community, it really represents the community's vision, and they are owning its success. So how did we engage? So the process started off, and this is really hats off to Sandra, she led this effort, was the kickoff and speaker series. So we had a speaker coming in to talk about placemaking in vibrant cities, and another speaker coming in to talk about ecosystem services and kind of the natural context of planning. And that was intended to set the tone for a dynamic and engaging process. We also wanted to get out to the kitchens of people, so to speak. So we went out to the community. So through sounding boards and a mobile booth that was staffed in various locations, from the rec center to the Red Barn, to various restaurants, we actually took interactive panels out to the community to get their input. Molly went to the middle school and did some student mapping, talking to students about their aspirations and big ideas for the community, heard a lot about recreation, heard a lot about places to hang out, shops, and also natural assets coming from the youth. We also had stakeholder conversations. So we were doing this broad engagement, where we cast the net broadly and tried to hear from as many people as possible, but then we also had deep, focused conversations. So as part of the stakeholder conversations, we met with parental advisory committee with the school to try to get that child, the children's voice around the table. And then we also met with the 35 members of the development community and the development industry. Ultimately, they're the ones implementing this plan. So we wanted to understand what the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats were in Callwood for moving forward with business prosperity and successful development through the OCP process. And then really, the Keystone Event, and I know some of you attended, was the Ideas Fair. And this was really fun. So we had a series of activities. We had a bouncy castle, and food trucks, and a live band, and a number of activities that allowed people to engage in a really creative way. So what you're looking at here is a giant floor map. I understand you've already seen it, where we asked people to put ideas, identify problem areas, and cherished areas. And some themes, really interesting themes started to emerge, and we'll walk through those in a second. We also had an artist available, and she, using graphic design, was able to sketch people's visions on the spot and bring those to life. So we got ideas ranging from a boardwalk along the waterfront through to erosion control, through to creating industrial uses in Callwood Corners, to create employment-generating uses. It's really the whole gamut. And it's all included in your report. And I'm sure many of you have observed that at public events, people typically come. It's only natural. Come with their own viewpoints, and they want to hear, or they want to put forward their own perspective. So we had an exercise called "In Their Shoes." We crafted fictional narratives about different people living in Callwood, someone who needs affordable housing, a child with accessibility challenges, seniors who are wanting to downsize. And we asked participants to put themselves in the shoes of those residents to try to craft some strategies around how the OCP could make Callwood a better place for them. And we got some really great ideas. I was really impressed. So typically, we found in this process, people aren't necessarily really wanting to see a lot of housing diversity in Callwood. People kind of like their, kind of the existing housing character. But when we asked them questions around downsizing, affordability, housing choice for diverse people and needs, they were actually very supportive of housing choice. So that was quite interesting. We also had a mayor-for-day exercise, and I think you're going to get run for your money at the next election, Mayor Hamilton, because we had a lot of folks strut by this station. And so they were given $10 budget, and they were supposed to use their $10 to vote for their priorities, where they would invest the municipal dollars within the community. And the top three were parks and open spaces, waterfront amenities, and getting around by foot or bike. And then we had an online survey. And this was a really important piece, because a lot of people, as you know, won't come out to a community event. We did get lots of folks out, but we got way more logging on and filling out the survey. So we had about 800 people fill out the survey. And Molly's going to walk through some of the outcomes, and some really powerful themes emerged. Quite interesting, great telling. So who did we engage? At the end of the day, after our Phase One of engagement, we estimate we have about 1,300 direct interactions. There's some overlap. That doesn't necessarily mean 1,300 participants, but we had 1,300 direct interactions. So that includes, as I mentioned, almost 800 surveys completed. We had about 200 people come to the Ideas Fair, 140 people to the speakers' events. We had literally hundreds and thousands of comments to comb through, and many conversations with staff and other stakeholders. So we're very, very pleased with the volume of input we received, but we were also very pleased with the fact that we were really seeing themes emerging. Themes emerging across demographic groups, themes emerging across interactive exercises and events. So when you see that happening, when you have the seniors saying the same thing as the developers, and high school students saying the same things as the parental advisory committee, you know that there's some truth emerging. So I'm going to walk through some of those themes. So there's six that kind of jumped out at us. The first one is that our heart is Callwood Corners. So when we asked people to math at the events and in the survey, where is the heart today? The number one choice is Callwood Corners. When we said, where is the community heart tomorrow? Callwood Corners again, but tying with Royal Bay, which is kind of interesting. It was also, interestingly, the number one place that people identified as a problem area. It's a place that people want to care about, and they want, they want it to be better than it is, and they believe it can be, but they do feel like there's lots of challenges. Words like, someone said, it's a hole in the road. You did get a lot of those comments, but people aren't ready to turn their back on it, just, yeah. That was one of the key themes that we heard. So the heart is Callwood Corners, and the soul is the waterfront. When we ask people about special places, they talk about the water, they talk about lagoon, they talk about natural spaces and forested areas. Mayor-for-day, as I mentioned, the waterfront was one of the top things that people talked about. At the developer workshop, we heard this is your competitive advantage. This really does seem to be the thing that people identify Callwood with, or they want to identify Callwood with in the future. The third theme that came forward is streets for people, and this actually isn't about transportation. So we talked to people, we heard a lot about streets, but we heard about transportation too, and I'll get to that in a moment. But people really want to have a different experience in your streets. They see streets as a place for public life, or they want it to be a place for public life. One of the parents is talking about her desire to go to Callwood Corners for the day. Go there with her kid, be able to sit in a sidewalk cafe, have coffee with her friend while they're watching their children playing in the playground. They want to see more public life, and they want to see just more activity and a more vibrant richness happening in the street. On the flip side, people also are thinking about streets in terms of mobility and transportation. And overwhelmingly, we heard, whether it was a specific question we asked about transportation, or whether it was just an open-ended question, what do you want to see change in Callwood? Transportation came up time and time again. Specifically, people want walking and cycling opportunities, and many, many people talk about transit, recognizing it's a regional issue in part, but really wanting to see services enhanced. And with really wild ideas ranging from ferries to rail lines to Victoria. The fifth thing we heard a lot about is there's nowhere to go in Callwood. We want, we want places to go and places to gather, whether it's arts and cultural facilities, whether it's pubs and cafes in our neighbourhoods, whether it's being able to spend the day on the waterfront because there are amenities there. We want places to go and places to gather. And the last thing we heard was there's this huge opportunity, and that opportunity is Royal Bay. When we asked, as I said, about where's the, where's the future heart of Callwood? People often would mention Royal Bay, and they see this as a huge opportunity. They don't see themselves, Callwood residents don't see themselves as a suburb of Victoria. They don't want to. They don't see themselves as a big city. They see themselves as a seaside community with village-like character, and they see Royal Bay as an opportunity to bring that to life. So those are kind of the six key emergent themes. Now, there's a lot of nuance, and as I mentioned, hundreds, hundreds or even thousands of comments. But those are the six that kind of bubbled to the surface. So I'm going to hand it over to Molly, who's just going to spend a couple of minutes walking through some of the, some of the things we heard, more specifically in the, in the Big Ideas event and in the online survey.
Yeah, so as Jennifer mentioned, one of our kind of Keystone Events was the Big Ideas Fair. And we had quite a few different activities, and we had a really diverse group of people who came out. And I just included this slide to really highlight that. I had conversations with one lady who said that she came out, and she was really compelled by the women's marches that were happening in the United States. And so she really wanted to come and have her voice heard. There was soccer games outside, so there was a lot of young people who came out who were really wanting to have their voices heard about recreation. So I'll just really emphasize that there was a really diverse group that came out. And so we had around 200 people, we counted, come out to that event. And we had, for this particular activity, we gave people kind of an open-ended forum, and we asked them, what was their big idea? What was their big idea for the future of Callwood? And people really gravitated to this. There was a lot of magnetism and activity in and around this area. And we had 90 responses. And the themes that emerged from this really did echo some of the ones that Jennifer has highlighted already. But one of the key themes that emerged was concern in and around transportation. And so people really were emphasizing the desire for connectivity and for infrastructure improvements. Another key theme that emerged was a real valuing of the waterfront. And so as Jennifer said, this is kind of the soul of the community, and it's an opportunity to highlight and honour the past, the present, and the future of the community. And so here, you know, one of the people called and asked for there to be an honouring of the Coast Salish people with waterfront activities and development. So we also ran an online survey. As Jennifer mentioned, this can be really effective in getting some of the people who might not come out to public events. And we had 779 respondents. So over 1,000 people visited the site, and we had a 71% completion rate, which is actually very good for an online survey. So we asked three key questions. And the first was in and around identity. So what, what is Callwood known for, and what would we like Callwood to be known for in the future? The second question was asking around places. So what are the special places of today? What are the special places of tomorrow? And what are some areas that could use a little bit of improvement? And then the third question asked what growth might look like in and around the five Ts. So I'll just flesh out the first question. So the question is, which words describe the way you want Callwood to be known in the future? And the way that we asked people to answer this question was that there was eight options, and they would select five and pull it above the line as one of their priorities. And so you can see that clearly people want there to be a clean and green. That's what they want Callwood to be known for. And as Jennifer mentioned, they really value the waterfront, the oceanfront community, and they want there to be small, vibrant villages, and also quiet neighbourhoods. It's a little hard to read on the side, I apologize. But another really clear thing that comes from this is that you can see people did not choose more like a big city, only 49 as compared with 531 for clean and green. So this really paints a clear picture of what people want to be known for and what they want the future of Callwood to look like. So this, oh, this, this slide speaks to the third question that we asked that was in and around visual preferences for the five Ts. So the first T is town centres. And you can see that there's a clear majority that want to see pedestrian-focused village centres with shops and homes, whereas only 4% want to see strip malls with lots of visible parking from the street. In transportation, it's less of a clear outcome. You can see 41%, 41% respond that they want to see streets that prioritise walking. But you can see that there's a desire for multimodal transportation. For topography, again, you can see clearly people really value the natural environment and want to have development that honours and respects that. For tidelines and oceanfront, you can see that there's a big desire to see some sense of activity in and around that area, but to really respect the natural tidelines and oceanfront. And for trees, again, you see a very clear picture. So people want to see new development that protects existing trees. And so these kind of start to paint a really clear picture of what development might look like in the future. So just in closing, I'll let Jennifer take and wrap things up.
Yeah, so we just wanted to leave with this one slide. Again, just to convey how happy we are with, is how much the richness of input we received and the volume of input we received, and we feel that we're in a very good space now. We've got our marching orders, so to speak, from the community to move forward into crafting a vision and policy instead of strategic directions, which we'll be doing. And so that's what we wanted to share with you today, so happy to take questions.
Counsel? Counselor Noel?
Just one question on the online survey. I've seen these surveys get hijacked before by people doing multiple responses and skewing the answers. Have you got any assurances that that's accurate and not one person voting 779 times?
Yeah, did you answer that?
Sure. So with the platform that we use, it's Metrequest. And we're able to track IP addresses, so we can go in and see if there's, you know, 50 responses coming from one IP address. So that's one way of tracking and making sure that it's not being hijacked.
I would just add to that as well, that with the volume of participation we received, the people who are going in and doing four or five surveys, if they were to do it, would be very diluted, because we have 800. But we did do a check for IP addresses.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing weird came up.
Anybody else? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Could you go back about three frames? Keep going. Stop. Nope, sorry, too far. Go forward one. There. So can you, I'm getting confused on the 77 and the 19. So they're, they're looking for pedestrian-focused village centres, but they don't want commercial clusters with internal parking lots. So where, where are people, like, what's the interpretation of that? Is the interpretation that people want to be able to walk to, to the village centres? Or how are they planning on getting to these, since 77% of people want to get to, to village centres? How, how are they getting there?
It's a good question. So I think the difference between those two images is the one on the left, the pedestrian-focused village centres, is one that's really focusing on a very intimate relationship between the building and the street. And there's a lot of public life happening as a result. There's that intimate dynamic. Whereas the commercial clusters with internal parking lots, yes, it's not like a strip mall, but it is still a little bit more car-dependent, a bit of a car-oriented. So it's teasing out some of that, some of the nuance that we'd be looking at when we're developing design guidelines.
So just as a quick follow-up, so are you, again, I'm just asking, I don't know anything. Just ask the rest of council. Can you, can you, are you suggesting the 77%, though? Does that include on-road parking? Like, because that wouldn't create an ambiance of that village feel that you're sort of describing. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand...
Oh, how do people get there? That's the question.
Yeah, like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand, like, it's nice to say, obviously, we would all love to have a city centre where you can just walk and pedestrian-friendly. But I'm just curious, how, what were people expecting to get there?
No, it's a good, it's a good point. And so, I mean, if you look at what people are saying, people are wanting to see more destinations within walking distance of home, for example. So that's an example of a town centre, but you could also have multiple smaller neighbourhood nodes that are easily within walking distance of home. This, actually, street parking, it's kind of counterintuitive, but street parking is actually a good thing for a pedestrian experience, because it creates that extra buffer from the road. And typically with street parking, it provides a little bit more friction for drivers. And so drivers tend to actually drive more slowly when there is street parking. So those shops and services will rely upon that street parking. And if we were doing design guidelines, from an economic standpoint, we would never suggest to not have street parking. You can actually see it in that photo, but typically those streets, those retail streets, do have street parking, metered street parking.
Well, sorry, and just, just as a quick follow-up, because you talked about people wanting Callwood Corners to be the heart of Callwood. And so if we were to build a town centre, which represented 77% of what people want, that, where, where were people expecting us to put their vehicles? If they don't want to do a commercial cluster with internal parking? Because, I mean, as you know, Callwood Corners, where, where do you go from there if you can't bring your vehicle?
It's, it's kind of chicken and egg, right? Like, some people will say, you talk to some BIAs, and they'll say, oh, you know, the thing we need right now for a successful downtown is more parking. We need to make it easier for people to get here. But sometimes the parking displaces the very things that make it downtown interesting and lively. So it's, there's no silver bullet, but managing parking by concealing it, by putting it underground where it's economically feasible, by managing with on-street, and by encouraging more residential development, for example. So you're creating a neighbourhood. It's not just a commercial node, but rather a place where people live and they can therefore walk. All of those things taken together do make for a more feasible situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to do anything on recommending the draft through, or they are just moving into next steps? Perfect. Moving on to item number six, correspondence requiring council direction. We were in receipt of a letter from the Squamout Lagoon stewardship initiative in regards to input to the Callwood official community plan. to input to the Callwood official community plan. Counselor Logan.
Thank you, worship. I move that we refer, uh, the letter to the OCP process.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Counselor Noll.
Yes, as the council's representative on LC, I'd like to point out that most of what they're saying, they've said for the last two or three official community plans, the lagoon is a loved place, and they make the point that it's being loved to death. They have a few concrete suggestions to maybe lessen the crowd impact on it. And I particularly like their recommendation that Callwood put a minimum height for, uh, flyovers of the lagoon. It would be, uh, in keeping with other bird sanctuaries across the country, and, uh, it would certainly prevent, uh, there was some guy down there, I think, last summer with a parachute and a big fan on his back, motor-driven, going up and down the lagoon. Uh, it was really, uh, very noisy for the residents and very disturbing for the birds. So I think that's something that, uh, the OCP review can probably refer back to, uh, bylaw and enforcement. Thank you.
Anybody else call the question? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Next item of correspondence is, uh, email correspondence that was distributed to all of council in regards to Victoria Faith in Action Committee regarding Earth Charter endorsement.
Move receipt, your worship. Second.
Uh, any conversation, discussion? Counselor Noll?
Again, this mostly looks to be a motherhood and apple pie issue. Uh, Callwood Council has no impact whatsoever on environmental rules, military operations, or most of, most of the things the Earth Charter, uh, recommends. So I think receipt is, uh, for information is inappropriate.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Uh, looking then into item number seven, New Business Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee. Uh, shall we turn that over to you, Counselor Noll?
Thank you. I will be turning this over to staff as this did not actually get to committee due to having to cancel the meeting.
Director of Engineering?
Your worship, members of council, uh, before you is a development variance permit for Phase One of Olympic View. And this is specifically for, to vary the cro, the road cross-sections for Phase One of Olympic View. Um, the subdivision development bylaw has, uh, some standards that are really no longer common practice in Callwood. Uh, we have, uh, over the last few, uh, years been changing our standards. And so, uh, to be consistent, and I'm noticing consistency with what we're hearing on the OCP, what we've seen, uh, in the 2015 Transportation Master Plan, is a move to narrow, uh, rates of way widths, uh, narrow road widths, uh, for, for cars, have better trans, um, pedestrian facilities as well as bicycle facilities. Um, so it's, uh, it's fairly, um, detailed in that it has to deep, it has to go through every, every single detail that's varied from the old bylaw. But I can assure you that this is very consistent with what you have been seeing in Royal Bay and other similar, uh, neighborhoods, uh, and much more pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly. I wasn't going to go into a lot more details unless you had any questions.
Uh, there's a recommendation before us, council? Discussion first? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just a question in regards to accessibility. Um, nothing in the report speaks to what the grades are that the streets will be at, only to the widths. Um, but I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity to make them more accessible for people with wheelchairs or scooters, uh, through the grading or the curb cuts particularly?
Well, those are two separate things. But I agree, curb cuts, um, opportunities for curb cuts. We now have, uh, standards at each of the intersections, so that should be, should be accommodated. But I'm not entirely sure what the, the road grades are, are specified for these particular roads. Um, but there will be a minimum and maximum in, in the, um, in the subdivision, but I can get back to you on what it is for this particular one. I, I have a feeling it actually hasn't been submitted to us yet. This is strictly for cross-sections.
Right. Thank you. So, uh, uh, maybe just a little off-topic there, but appreciate the, the feedback. Anyone else? Seconder?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Uh, item seven point two, moving into Planning and Land Use Committee, report on request to amend covenant number CA four zero zero eight five eight three, uh, six eight six Donovan.
I, I will have to refer to staff, your worship.
Thank you, worship. Uh, back in two thousand and fourteen, uh, council approved the rezoning of six eight six Donovan Avenue, uh, that would allow the creation of eight new single-family lots. Uh, the owner of the property, who is, um, trying to sell, uh, the development site, uh, is asked to amend the development agreement that was registered as a condition of that rezoning, such that a septic system could be built on, uh, one of the two designated lots in that development agreement. Uh, the last page of the staff report shows the approved, uh, plan for subdivision. And at right at the back of the site, uh, there's strata lots one and two, which the development agreement specifies as the future site of a septic system. Um, Mr. Randall has asked that the development agreement be amended such that, if possible, the septic system could be built on one of the two, uh, strata lots. Staff support the request, um, as long as the, uh, the provisions included such that the, uh, Island Health Authority approve, uh, the change. And, uh, as such, we, uh, recommend that the council approve the amendment. Thank you.
Questions to staff? Counselor Day?
So I guess I'm just not quite clear, is it this creating it to be an eight-lot subdivision or a seven-lot subdivision?
Your worship, the subdivision was approved on the basis that, um, uh, in the interim, it could be serviced by onsite sanitary septic system. In the future, uh, when sewers became available, uh, those lots that were designated for the onsite septic could be then, uh, converted to development sites. So, uh, the total build-out, if sewer was available, would be eight lots. Uh, in a situation where onsite septic had to be, uh, implemented, there would be, uh, two of those eight lots, um, potentially used for septic. And Mr. Randall is proposing that, uh, if possible, only one of them is used for septic. So in that scenario, there'd be seven lots.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, uh, your worship, through you. Just, so just to clarify, he's expecting that one lot to service, um, the rest of the seven and act as a, um, almost like a, a shared septic field, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And so providing, you're saying, providing that Island Health says it's a go?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Noll?
Just a further follow-up to that question. Uh, Island Health requires a given size of septic field plus an area for a backup field. Is that correct?
Uh, generally speaking, a, a backup field is part of the requirement.
So it would be entirely under their jurisdiction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Um, I'm curious, uh, or concerned about a similar situation we had on I-Lot, where , uh, I-Lot went from, uh, a septic field, and then they got, went on to sewers. Um, but then, uh, the city was responsible for some of the pump station costs and everything of, of converting them. So my concern is if we're, if we're going to be allowing this, how are we protecting the city financially down the road when the owner wishes to convert that lot from being a septic field to getting on to sewers and then utilizing that lot to, uh, to build out it, it is eighth home? And is it the cost or responsibility of the city to pick up the pump station for th- this development? And how, how would we protect ourselves to make sure that that doesn't happen?
Uh, your worship, the request before us tonight would not have, uh, any implications for the costs, uh, associated with the hookup to the sewers. And if my memory serves me correctly, the development agreement specified that the cost would be borne by the property owners and not the city to connect the sewers.
So, uh, through, through the chair, then, can you explain why, why was that not the case with I-Lot?
Uh, apologies, I, I don't recall the details of that specific case.
So, sorry, I, so I-Lot, I-Lot is at the end of Heatherbill.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, um, the Ridley family owns the one lot that had this field on it. And the condition was once, uh, sewers were available in that area, that, uh, it would be the responsibility of the property owners to convert over to sewers. And the Ridley's basically gave a letter of demand saying, we wanted that septic field off that piece of property, which forced the owners to go on to a septic field, but you, you, or, excuse me, on to the sewers, but we needed to have a pump to obviously get that to work. And then the, the city ended up absorbing, uh, partial cost of that pump. Um, and I just want to make sure that as we move forward, the city isn't taking on those financial obligations.
So I'm, I'm, uh, taking a guess here, but, um, I-Lot is located on the downslope towards the water.
Uh, it's right beside, uh, Pacific Land.
Yeah, so I think the, the context of that situation, uh, required a, a pump which then had costs that weren't foreseen in whatever agreement was being acted upon. In this case, um, sewers aren't in place. However, the sewer master plan does specify that, uh, sewers would be, um, provided to this area without the need to pump, uh, into what is planned for the site. I can't guarantee that, um, that sewer master plan will be implemented as it's been, uh, planned. However, we don't foresee the same sort of scenario as you've described at I-Lot Place at this location.
I just would like to know if, uh, there will be something on title of the new homes that are built, uh, explaining that they are obligated to hook up to the city sewer at their cost, uh, when it becomes available. Uh, because, um, the I-Lot Place was, was a very, um, convoluted story and, and maybe quite different. But one, one thing that I could imagine happening, uh, is that someone would buy a house, not really think about whether you're on sewer or how it's dealt with, hard as that is to imagine. I do know of people who haven't asked about sewers when they bought a house. Uh, and I would want to be sure, uh, that there was no, um, uh, uh, perceived obligation of the city to provide, uh, an expensive service or a pump or anything else, uh, for those homes, and that it was very, very clear, uh, what the future obligations would be for their septic systems.
Uh, once again, the request is to simply change the wording such that a septic field could exist on one of the two lots as opposed to the two lots that are designated. Um, so the request doesn't have bearing on how the, um, sewers would be provided. Our recollection of what's in the development agreement, and apologies, I should have had it, uh, for this meeting, is that it, the owners are required to connect the sewers when it becomes available. Uh, I believe the timeframe is, uh, one year, uh, for that to happen. And certainly, um, it's expected that the owners bear the, the full cost of that connection.
Jason on the second?
Yes, as, uh, he just pointed out, the, the agreement is already in place. Council has already allowed the subdivision. The only question before us tonight is whether it's one lot for a septic field or two lots for a septic field. So, uh, we can't go back at this point and renegotiate what was done previously. So, um, I would move the recommendation.
Second.
Did you any further comment?
Uh, no, I was actually.
You're covering off. Counselor Day?
Uh, and sorry, I, I just, um, for clarity, I, I don't understand why we're being asked to reduce the size, uh, when we don't have an answer from, uh, the Health Authority as to whether or not that can be done. Uh, so I, I feel like the, uh, the egg is before the chicken or something there.
Egg is before the chicken.
She's detected a crack.
I think that's where you were going. Well, eggs and chickens, and I don't know if the egg is before the chicken.
Certainly, uh, we've discussed that issue with the applicant, and that's why the, um, what we're proposing as the new terms include the possibility of it being built on the two lots if the Health Authority requires it to be such. Um, the reality is that there's a cost associated with designing a site and then providing that design to Island Health for approval. And we just thought that it would be, um, protect the city's interest if the wording allowed for the two lots to be used if the Health Authority required it, at the same time not placing that burden on the, on the property owners to get the, the pre-approval from Island Health.
Staff?
Uh, your worship, just, um, further comment. I think, uh, being new to the community, I can say that, um, we were putting covenants on properties for, uh, septic field design, uh, without having the knowledge or expertise of, uh, septic field design and, and approvals. And, um, if, uh, the Island Health Authority say that they can, um, approve a septic field on one lot, then we shouldn't be restricting the developer through covenants, uh, that it has to be on two. And I think that's really what we're trying to say here, is that, uh, this is really up to the land developer and Island Health. And if, uh, Island Health says you can do it on one lot, then we should, we should allow that to happen. If, uh, they say they can't, then it's up to the developer to use his own land, uh, to put a whatever-sized septic field into that site that is necessary to serve the remaining lots on the site.
Any further comments? One more from Counselor Day?
Sorry, I, I, it's just difficult for me because I am aware of, of properties in Callwood where the neighbor's septic field was built on, on someone else's property. So, uh, I am concerned that, that we could be, uh, allowing a scheme whereby, uh, the septic field is, is built on, on lots that are later, um, or maybe developed. So I, I have, um, concern.
Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Um, item number seven point three, under Finance and Administration Committee, memorandum in regards to bylaw number one five nine five cited as road closure and dedication removal law, uh, bylaw for a portion of Latoya Road between Latoya Boulevard and Machosen Road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of the memo is just to let council know that, uh, bylaw number fifteen ninety-five, which is the road closure bylaw for a portion of Latoya Road between Machosen Road and Latoya Boulevard, uh, is, uh, to be closed. And we have to do a public process, inform all the, uh, utility operators who may be affected by the road closure, and work into a road exchange agreement, which will be also undertaken, uh, with a neighboring property who gave us Latoya Boulevard in exchange for the closed portion of road. Uh, all of those steps are all in the works and in place. The exchange agreement has been drafted with statutory right-of-ways for utility operators included with it. And public notice was put out on January twentieth and January twenty-seventh inviting anybody from the public who feels they may have an interest in the road closure. They could either make submissions to council in writing, or they could speak tonight. So you should probably ask anybody in the audi- audience if they have any comment on the proposed road closure. And then on final adoption of the bylaw, which is scheduled for later tonight, we'll be able to proceed with all the next steps. But before we can do that, we had to report what we've done, give the public an opportunity to talk, and adopt bylaw fifteen ninety-five.
Well, I hope they didn't leave already. But for the rest of you, if there's anyone that has anything specific to this highway dedication removal, um, now's your chance. And seeing none? We didn't receive anything in electronic submissions or anything else that you're aware of?
That's correct. There were no submissions.
Thank you. Um, so this is just receipt for the time being?
Move receipt, your worship?
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? And we will now move in to those bylaws. Uh, bylaw number one six two six for final reading. Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number- Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989. Amendment Number 154 for 291 Portsmouth.
Move final? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? First and second readings only on Callwood Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 999, 2008. Amendment Number 10 for Royal Bay, Latoya North.
Move introduction, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Nolte?
Yes, I would express some concerns with the Bylaw 1665 schedules before us tonight. The area for rezoning is Latoya North, yet it shows plans for all of the oceanfront, headlands, landing, bluff, and all of the other side of Latoya Road, Commons, Terrace, and Quarry. To my knowledge, none of these has been zoned yet. It seems to me it would be premature to have this level of detail in the bylaw without those having gone through the zoning procedure.
Staff?
Madam Mayor, just as maybe a point of clarification, we're talking about the Official Community Plan Amendment to 1665?
Yes.
So that includes the schedules that will be amended to reflect the changes that are coming forward in the Latoya North area?
I, I understand that, but it's also showing everything in the quarry, the terrace, the commons, the bluff, the landing, and the headlands, none of which has zoning for that development yet.
Right. This amendment is specifically to the area plan that's in the Official Community Plan. It's not affecting the zoning. That is in the following bylaw in the agenda package, and it, it specifically isolates the Latoya North area and then the additional remnant zones that are being from Phase One of Royal Bay.
I bring that up specifically because these areas have come up again and again in the OCP review as areas where the public would like more input into exactly what is happening, especially along the waterfront. And, I mean, we can amend the Official Community Plan now, but it will be a new official community plan hopefully by year end and reflect what the public actually wants down there.
Anything further? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 8.3, Bylaw Number 1666, first and second readings. Callwood Land Use, Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989. Amendment Number 157, Royal Bay, Latoya North.
Move introduction, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving on then to final reading on Bylaw Number 1595, Road Closure and Dedication Removal Bylaw for a Portion of Latoya Road Between Latoya Boulevard and Machosen Road, Bylaw Number 1595, 2016.
Move final? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Motion to go in camera?
Move second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you, folks.